Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for joining us for March 27th for an additional work session on the budget. And we're pleased today to have with us the superintendent of schools and members of the school administration. And there are a lot of questions I'm sure people have to ask as far as staff is concerned. And so we'll get on with the meeting. Thank you. Who's going to go first? Me?
You can start.
I just started it. Roll call, please.
Mr. Hallright?
Yes.
Ms. Knoll?
Here.
Mr. Drury?
Present.
Mr. Roun?
Here.
Mr. Shepherd?
Here.
Madam Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Now I'll turn the meeting over to our county administrator.
Thank you very much. So as requested, we asked Dr. Shandor and his colleagues to come tonight and talk a little bit about CIP. And I will turn it over to Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Mr. Bellamy, Board of Supervisors, and county staff, and other folks who are in the room. We're happy to be here. I do have a presentation that I'd like to pull up to get us started. First, I wanted to share, I'm not going to go through this, but this was a presentation that I sent to the Board of Supervisors in October. If you recall, October 29th. Again, it's 102 slides. I will not go through all of those, but I wanted to make sure that all of our citizens and constituents were aware. It's basically a really nice summary of before and after pictures of a lot of work that we've done for the last decade in the school division. Just really quickly, I wanted to hit just a couple real quick to show some of the work, some of the roof HVAC systems we've done. But this is a lot of our breezeways. If you remember, this was the breezeway at Dare Elementary School several years ago. And just an example of what we've done is closing it. That's what it looks like now. So we've done a lot of work in the school system. And I'll just ask Mr. Bellamy if he could post that on your, either your website or on your agendas for the community to take a look at.
Sure.
Thank you. So let me open this up. All right. Thank you again for the invitation. Share the work in YCSD regarding capital projects. I have Dr. Carroll, our chief operations officer, as well as Mr. Bowen, who is our chief financial officer, here with me this evening to share information and contribute to the discussion related to the capital budget. Tonight, we're going to try to bring some clarity and answer some questions related to the TAB project from Board of Supervisors. So did want to share a little bit of information leading into the conversation. First, definitely want to thank the staff in the room who've been here for a number of years to collaborate with the school system and our staff related to all of our capital projects, really everything that we do together. Mr. Bellamy, who was in a different role before, a year ago or so. Obviously, Mr. Morgan, who was here for a long, long time. This goes back to when Mark Carter was here as interim. So we've done a lot of work together. So we've certainly had a history of collaboration and cooperation. So one of the challenges that we've had, and I think this is no different than on the county side, trying to keep pace with an aging infrastructure. We'll get into that in a few minutes. Also, in the last 10, 11 years, we've been able to complete a lot of our smaller projects. A lot of those are mostly completed. We've now moved into some of our larger projects, hence the reason why we're here today. In recent years, we had sort of an understanding with the county. We worked on around a $9 to $10, $11 million number for each year of the CIP. But again, most of those smaller jobs have been completed. And Dr. Carroll and I and Mr. Bowen, we meet with county staff on a regular basis. We have a CIP meeting that happens weekly. Or is it bi-weekly? Bi-weekly. And we've shared that a lot of those smaller projects are done when you think about breezeways and security vestibules. And a few years ago, Mr. Morgan gave $3 million to the school system related to, I think, I believe it was Esser Funds. And the agreement was we would use that $3 million to use for the schools, but in a mutual way. So meaning for our parks and rec programs, we updated a lot of our elementary gyms during that time, which desperately needed it. A lot of our gym floors, we did the floor at Dare Elementary. If you've lived in York County a long time, you know how popular skate, rattle, and roll is. So we've done a lot of that work through the last several years. So I wanted to just share with you really quickly the ages of our schools. So if you'll just take a minute and you could look at when each of our schools were built. So it's important to note that the average age of a school in York County is 54 years old. And what we're talking about this evening is TAB High School. As you can see, it was built in 1972. And our newest building is the Grafton Complex, which was built in 1996. Again, if you look at that list, you'll notice elementary, our elementary, the range when they were built was between 1954 and 1989. We've touched all of those schools in the last 10 years. So a lot of those photos that you'll see of the pictures that I've posted, it's a lot of pictures of that work, the elementary schools. At the middle school level, they were built from 1954 to 1996. Again, that's including Grafton Middle. All of those schools had some renovation in the last 20 years. However, at the high school level, between 1954 and 96, this is where the work is currently. So again, just wanted to share a sample of our track record working with the county and working through the capital programs. This is Waller Mill Elementary School. Do you have, I don't know if you'd be better to ask the questions, go along, or do you want to? If you'll just give me a few slides to go through, because I want to talk about HVAC systems, roofs, and a few other things.
One of the numbers I will look for is how much have we put into all these renovations? What's the total number?
Okay. While I'm talking, Mr. Bowen's gonna. Mr. Bowen's gonna phone a friend.
You got the crystal ball.
So we'll work through that number. I think I do have a number, but let me get to that. But again, this is Waller Mill Elementary School. I believe this picture was taken 2015 or 2016. This school was built in 1969. So and again, the work that we've done up there, if you recall, we added a wing to this school. We added a gym, because remember, this school never had a gymnasium. We actually, the library and front office, we expanded those. We pushed those out. That's what you see in the front, where the gray area is on this side is the library. And on the other side that's pushed out is the expansion for the office. We also, every classroom was renovated. We got new classroom cabinets, furniture, lighting, everything that you can think of in this school. So proud of that project. Another example is Seaford Elementary School. Many of you know that we just finished this project. It was a two-year project in Seaford. This picture is obviously prior to the renovations. Again, this school was built in 1962. So here, again, here's what it looks like today. That renovation, as you know, included a wing addition in the back of the school. We upgraded all the major components of the school, windows, roof. We removed the stage from the cafeteria and put that in the gymnasium so that the cafeteria could have more space. And now it's a, what would you call it? A gymatorium, I guess would be, I don't know if that's the word or not. But that is a beautiful space for kids. And let's see. And then next, I wanted to just jump into some of our major system renovation history. So you could see from this sheet, this basically shares HVAC system renovation. So as you can see, TAB High School has the oldest whole building HVAC system in the school division. And it's, I believe it's 27 years old. So again, we've done a lot of work in the school system, and this is where we are with TAB. Again, for HVAC, the McGruder HVAC that is above that is just for the addition. And then Dare Elementary HVAC is just for the gym, and those systems are working fine at this point. So when you look at roof renovations, again, we've done some really good work with your support, with the county's support through the last 10, 11 years. We've done a lot of great work. But as you can see on the screen, the largest renovation projects that need, here is the roof replacement. As you can see, TAB High School has the oldest roof by six years in the school system. So for roofs, TAB High School and Queens Lake are our two oldest roofs, and they are listed in the CIP. So when you look at our oldest renovations and additions, when you look at this slide, this is just from 2000 to 2011. Again, I was not here, nor was anyone on my team, actually, at that time. So but I thought it was important to share these renovations that have occurred during this time in the last 25 years to help put the TAB renovation in perspective. Here, you'll see two things. One, TAB High School is not on this list. The last time that we renovated TAB High School, I believe, is 1998. Also, you see where all of our geothermal, so I've clicked the screen so you can see where we have our geothermal conversions of seven buildings, eight schools, because York Town Middle has York River Academy attached to it, so that makes the eighth school. So just again, hopefully, this is some helpful information so we can give you a little history of what we've done. And then when you think about not only HVAC and roof systems and those major components that run a school, how do we bring our schools forward? So this is an example of one. So we renovated the York High School library back in 2019. So I believe it was the year before COVID. And actually, just this week, we hosted leaders from the Virginia Department of Education. They came to learn more work about improving student reading comprehension and literacy at the high school level. So Dr. Butler and a number of our team members were over there. They were super impressed with the learning commons and its value in educating our students. They're actually going to come back to showcase the benefits of that space, to share it with school divisions across the, oh, hold on. My apologies. So this is what it used to look like, and then here's what it looks like now. So that's what it looks like for the first, in the last five or six years. And just to give you some aspects of this space, really what we're going for, I don't know why that keeps moving on me. It's a very sensitive mouse. There we go. I won't touch it. What we're hoping to accomplish here with this space is a couple of things. One is to provide a space for kids to collaborate, for kids to think critically, and to solve problems. If you look in the very back where the glass is in the back, there's four collaborative spaces there. They have raised, I don't want to call them hub tables or pub tables, I don't want to call them that either, but they're raised tables with seats around about five or six chairs around them. So six students could go in there, and they could either study together, work on a project together. There's a number of different things they can do there, and they have technology right in there that they can access. Also, all of the furniture that you see, it's flexible seating. So we can move this furniture anywhere we would like to. There's also a space where it says chills and thrills right there. I don't know what that means. I'll have to ask Dr. Butler what that is. Anyway, I believe that's the section of books. To the right of that, there's a full classroom there that we, teachers sign that space out to come in and again, use that space. They use that space they could use. It's flexible seating in there, and all of the technology is available for them. In the back corner, they have a green room, a green screen. They also have podcast equipment. So for a lot of our marketing classes, they have a sports marketing class there. So they access that equipment in this space to work on projects for the school and all those types of things. They also convert an area on the lower back half. They have a coffee shop in the morning. They have a special education program there, and those kids run a coffee shop in the morning for staff and kids. So it's really, and then there's an upstairs space. There's some offices up there, but there's also flexible seating and technology to be used up there. All right. So this is Bruton High School, just another example of us converting space to sort of modernize and bring them forward. This was the old space at Bruton High School, their old library. And then you can see now a picture of the new learning commons. So this was our second effort up here. They also have four collaborative spaces. You can see one of them there to the right. The other three are actually on this left wall. Again, the furniture and everything, you can move everything to accommodate whatever they're wanting to do in that space. In the right, the last picture, you can see where that green wall is right there. So now that's all glass. Those are actually sliding glass doors, and there's a classroom in there that has technology, and all of the furniture can be moved to accommodate whatever class wants to use that space. So the old model of the library, I mean, I graduated high school in 1988, and my library basically looked like that. Forty years later, education has changed. We obviously know the uptick in usage of technology has changed, and how we're trying to grow our kids for the workforce, military, all of these things after they leave us. We want to make sure we have a good space for them to create. And then last but not least, this is TAB High Schools. So when you look at TAB High School's library, their library, keep in mind, this is space for 1,100 students at TAB High School. And I was joking the other day, but this is the same library that our school board vice chair, Mr. Richardson, utilized from his time there in 1975 through 1979. Sorry to throw out your graduation year. But I think it's important.
You sure he utilized it?
His name's still carved in the tables. But I think it's important to note that 1979 to now, a lot of things have changed. So as we're trying to update these spaces to meet the needs of our kids, so you got a good picture of two examples of what we've done, and those spaces are utilized by kids and staff and teachers all the time. So I just wanted to give you a good picture of this. So our plan moving forward, there were some questions about, why are you trying to put a learning commons there? Hopefully, I explained that in some detail for you. The other part would be, our goal here is to convert this space into classrooms, because this space is unbelievably small. So small for a learning commons. However, we can convert this space with, I think, a few other nooks and crannies around it and can come up with four classrooms. So if we convert that space to four classrooms, we also have a mobile out there. And I believe there's two classrooms out there in the mobile classroom. We actually put a fence around there because of the construction that's going on behind the school. If we do that, we also know a couple of things. One, we'll be able to get rid of that mobile if we add four classrooms. The other thing we understand is we have a middle school bubble. And when I say bubble, I mean, we have some grade levels that have a lot more kids in them than others. So is it fifth grade or? So.
Probably sixth grade.
Our current fifth grade that's going into sixth grade, I don't know what was going on however many years ago, but we have a lot of students coming through all of our zones into sixth grade, particularly the TAB zone. So as those students matriculate up, when we think about when we do a renovation, it's not just for this year's seniors or next year's seniors, whatever. It's every child that goes through that zone, whether they're a TAB elementary student, Mount Vernon student, or middle school student. So just wanted to jump into the factors in prioritization, and Mr. Bowen is going to share that. You may want to click, because that mouse is very sensitive.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. So as Dr. Shandor provided an overview of our facility's history and some of the work that we've done thus far, I want to transition into some of the factors influencing project prioritization, cost estimates, and then also our schedule. So first, county agreements. We have longstanding agreements with the county that play a significant role in the work that we do. So before constructing a new school, the school division explores several different strategies, including deploying mobile units, or learning cottages, as we like to call them, rezoning, and expanding existing schools if space permits. Second, we consider enrollment trends. And as we know, in recent history, we've seen now that the enrollment in York County continues to grow. However, we've had several years or several points in the last 20 years that we've seen an economic downturn. First, the Great Recession, where we saw a five-year decline, but it took us 11 years to recover from our enrollment, which was the high at the time in 2008. Took us until 2019 to recover from that enrollment. And then when COVID hit, we were set in 2021 to exceed 13,000 students for the first time. However, we ended up losing 670, and it took us until 2025 to surpass the enrollment we had in 2020. Third, we have priority shifts that may occur due to building maintenance needs or changing circumstances. So the annual facilities are assessed, I'm sorry, the facilities are assessed annually by our capital and maintenance staff. And as they go through these every summer, if there's a project that presents itself that's showing greater deterioration, like a roof or HVAC system, then that will often change the priority on the CIP itself. And a good example of this was the Bruton High School roof. And then fourth, programming.
I couldn't hear the last bit. Was it Bruton?
Bruton High School roof, yes. And then fourth, programming and rezoning decisions also affect the prioritization. So a notable example of this was the Dare Elementary Project, where an expansion was initially planned. However, the school division went through a reprogramming of the gifted extend center. So we had the gifted program there, Dare. We decentralized that, pushed that back into elementary schools, and it freed up space at Dare. And so we were able to take that expansion project off the CIP. So talk a little bit about the cost estimates. So first, when a project lands on our CIP, the capital staff generate preliminary estimates based on historical data from similar projects, a market analysis of construction costs, and also input from contracts and vendors. And these are really just rough estimates, because we just have an idea of what needs to be done. And so we don't, again, these estimates are very rough. Second, as a project moves up to the CIP timeline, architects and engineers provide rough cost estimates and to refine the project projections. Third, as the project nears the funding year, the scope and cost estimates are further refined by the contracted architectural and engineering firm. And that's where we are right now with TAB. We've just contracted with the A&E firm, and we're working to refine the scope and also the cost of the project. However, the final cost, and I say final cost in quotes, because when you're involved in construction, you start tearing down walls, you see things that you don't normally see, or they don't see things that need to be accounted for. And so there's often contingencies that have to be accounted for. But we won't see that final cost until the competitive bidding process occurs. So we still have some months before that process occurs with the TAB project. And then finally, just wanted to provide just an annual calendar of our CIP process. And a few things I wanted to highlight is here, the majority of our school projects occur during the summer, the exception being major renovations, as is the case with TAB. This will be a multi-year project. And then over the summer, the capital maintenance staff assess all the facilities. And from these assessments, the facilities master plan is developed, and this is what is done in October. Also, in October, the countywide CIP committee begins a meeting, which Dr. Carroll attends. In November, the school division holds community budget meetings and school board meetings, and school division staff meet with the county to discuss structuring our facilities master plan with the county's debt schedule and with their CIP. So we have to take into consideration the debt implications of that schedule. In December, the CIP is, I'm sorry, in November, the facilities master plan is presented to the board, and we also hold a public forum on that master plan at the end of the month. And then in December, staff presents the capital improvements plan to the board, and we also hold a public hearing at that time. In January, staff will present a budget update and CIP update to the board. And then later that month, the school board approves our CIP, and then that is sent over to the county to be incorporated in their plan. In April, the capital maintenance staff begin planning facilities assessment for the next year. And in May, the Board of Supervisors adopt the school board budget and CIP, and hopefully the TAB High School project, as we remain optimistic, right? And in June, the facilities assessment begins again in construction, where our summer projects begin in June. That's just an overview of our calendar. And now I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Carroll, who's going to provide some specific information and dollars related to the TAB project.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Members of the board, it's nice to be with you today. So I'd like to begin by reminding you of what Dr. Shandor said at the beginning of his presentation, looking at our major systems of roofs and HVAC, and then our renovation schedule, and how it's been a bit time since we've been at TAB High. So the first time we see this project is back when we still had a 10-year master plan. And that's in FY '16, where the fund was, where we were projected to start the construction in FY '19. This is a good example of how things float in the master plan or the CIP, because conditions change. We have a roof that's gone bad. We've got to move it up. We've got a building we're not going to build anymore, goes off. And so it started in '16, as far as on a plan for just HVAC roof and replacing the windows. And then the next time we really look at it making a change is in FY '18. And that was the year when we switched from a 10-year plan to a six-year plan, both the county and the school division switched then. So you see the cost go down, projected cost, because the roof fell off the back end. It was in the seventh year. And then it returns the next year in FY '19, but you also see that we're having some slide in where we're having that happen. And we move on, and as things move along, we've got now, we're going to add locker room renovations and restrooms across our secondary schools. And so that gets added in the same year. But that's also going to get, we've delayed that to fold it into a renovation, if we could. So we were having discussions for quite a while on the fact that we would like to have a full renovation at TAB, because it was the next one. As soon as we got clear of Seaford, then TAB would be the natural place to go next. In '22, you see, we had to push the funding back a year. And then in '23, we then add the office and the learning commons, trying to get a little more to happen out there. But the big change, I think the one that has gotten everybody's attention, is in fiscal year '25. And so the explanation for why the scope of the project becomes so much larger is exactly what Mr. Bowen mentioned earlier, that the Dare project was now not necessary, between the fact that we had decentralized the extend program, but also we were very deep into the rezoning project. And as we were starting to see what would happen with Dare if we rezoned, geographically it was just getting so large that we had no wish to make it any larger.
And we also added, if you recall, after COVID, we started the one-to-one initiative. And we started the one-to-one computer initiative, or Chromebooks, or whatever. We no longer needed to have computer labs in our schools. Some elementary schools had two labs, so we picked up some space from that as well.
Right. But between the rezoning, the way that was looking, and the extend change, now the Dare project is removed in the FY '25. And we look to re-task that money, because now here's the opportunity to do the renovation at TAB High School that we wished to do, that we were looking for. And remember that it's that renovation, but we're also combining programs or projects that we were doing across the division. The locker rooms were being looked at. We did them at York High, York Middle, and a little bit of TAB this year, but we didn't finish it out. And then also the learning commons that Dr. Shandor mentioned earlier, because those were things now that were kind of smaller projects at other schools that we would want to fold into the renovation. Yes, sir.
You've got to keep up with what you're talking about. So you're talking about the shift of what your CIP had for, and then why you crunched it down to two years or?
No, I'm talking about how when we did not any longer need to expand Dare, there was 20 and a half million on the CIP for that. Now we could leave a half million, because we still have to do a little bit of HVAC work there. But now there was 20 million that could be re-tasked for another.
Put that over to TAB?
Right.
Okay. So somewhere in here, we're going to get to why you crunched it down, right? When I say crunched down, you made it shorter period versus the five years.
I can answer that right now. I mean, part of it is there's systems around us, and my experiences over the last 20 years in administration, having a school disrupted for five to six years for a renovation isn't what's best for kids. It's not what's best for the community. It's not what's best for teachers. So it wasn't a, let's push it, let's crunch this down as far as we can. We met with Mr. Bellamy, we met with Teresa, we met with Susan for a month and a half, two months, so they could understand the rationale behind the why, which was, let's not disrupt a high school or any school for five or six years. Let's try, if we could do three, if we could do two. So we worked during that time to look at the percentages for the debt service and to make sure that we were below those requirements. So we had several iterations that we would go. So we had several iterations that we, we would go back and forth on, and, um, they would come with a certain number for a certain year, and we would say, well, you know, if we can put, uh, you know, a cash investment on this year, it would drop down the debt service, et cetera. So we spent two months on that with staff to, um-
Sorry, what was that?
I, I think it was a, it sounded like a drill, but I think it was a phone. So anyway, that, that's, that was the reason for, um, moving it from six to three. Because, you know, disrupting Seaford for two years was, was tough, right? But we, but at Seaford, it was easier because the whole first year, we were really building wing on the back of the school. But, you know, when you have a, a large comprehensive high school that has, you know, there's community events, you have the auditorium stuff, that's, you know, musicals and theater and athletics and everything, you know, I don't know how many clubs are at TAB High School, I would guess 40 to 50 clubs. So there's a lot of after-school things. It's not just, uh, seven to 230 or 215, you know, building operation. So that's why we-
So it's principally the, the, is, is to minimize the disruption to the school itself, for operations of the school. Was there any savings determined in this, this period? Like, like availability of resources, stuff like that?
I, I mean, again, I think it might be too early for us to tell that because we're still working through that process. I, I would, my answer would be yes, because of inflation. So you still would have, if you're able to do it in three years, there's three years that you're, you know, later three years, you won't, you know, hit, again, we're facing a lot of challenges. I think everybody is. We don't know where the tariffs thing's going to go. We've already been through a situation with, um, what's it called, the back-
Supply chain.
Supply chain. So there's, yeah, so there's always going to be some sort of problems. But again, the main reason was for, let's not disrupt the school for any longer than we have to while we're upgrading.
I think what I, I think it's important to understand, you know, you talked about inflation. When you start getting into the tens of millions, um, I mean, I've seen it at the hundreds of millions, but I know the tens of millions, the, a percentage here, a percentage there, amounts up to a lot of money, um, investments, or if you have to buy stuff.
Right.
So I'm just, that's why I was just kind of curious, is there any savings in terms of your, how you were looking at it in terms of, yeah, it's, it's, it's a three-year period shorter than what you asked, you were originally planning for. But it's still some savings, I would think, in terms of purchasing supplies.
And I think there's, in, uh, Dr. Carroll's last slide, he's going to talk about, I think there's five bullets about opportunities to work on lowering the price. So if we want to let Dr. Carroll just finish, he has maybe a couple more slides.
Sure.
That's okay, it's a great question.
Why the jump from, call it 10 million nominally, to 37 or 40 million? What, what changed?
That was the, the 20 million. And also, we've talked about it before, that we were being advised to make sure that you had some contingency for the inflation and the, and the soft costs that you're unaware of. But I would point out to you that when you look at the 37.9 million out there, that is only 2 and a half million over the previous year's combined Dare and, uh, TAB High School project.
I understand that, but what did you add to TAB that suddenly caused it to more than triple in cost? That's the question mark. We heard geothermal, and it didn't make sense.
No, that was, that was added in '26. No, it was the, it was the-
Sheriff's building was 3.8 million for geothermal, so how do you possibly relate a 40-something number? That's, that's why we're struggling.
Okay.
We didn't understand that jump that took you from, I'll call it fiscal year '24, to where you are today.
So if you look at it, or-
I believe the switchgear was another item.
Yeah, but that was part, that's part of the electrical upgrade. Like you said, that, that's a four million, I think, in, uh, increase. But what, what's, when we're talking about '25, so now the whole project has come into view. We're talking now about a back entrance at the gym that takes advantage of the fact that we have to have a pump house there if we're going to have, uh, geothermal. And also to improve the bathrooms back there, if anybody's gone back there. That was my first impression of TAB High School. The second day I worked here, uh, Dr. Shandor took me to a ballgame that night, and my first impression of a York County school was that back entrance.
Yeah, welcome by the dumpsters.
Yeah. Uh, and that's not a great first impression, but that's where a lot of people enter the school for the first time. Uh, but we're taking advantage of the, of that opportunity, that the pump house would be there. So we, we're looking at the, uh, the back entrance and, and do something different there. I'm also talking about-
Before you go down that road, this, this is where it gets difficult to understand. You're very familiar with these projects, okay? You know, and, you know, I'm familiar with TAB High School to a point, okay? I don't live there like you guys do. But it comes to understanding the expense. I mean, this 30, what is it, 37.9 million, okay? That's a hunk of change, all right? And, um, a big, a big piece, that's geothermal, correct?
Can you have this for me?
Yes, but that's, but you have to remember with ge-
How much of that is geothermal?
But with geothermal, you have to understand that we're going in and we are redoing the HVAC system anyway. So the difference in the construction cost is, I think I sent over a couple of days ago, uh, is 2 and a half million for the construction cost alone, that's all we're talking about, is you're still going to spend all of that 2 and a half on a standard HVAC system. So the geothermal-
So, so you're saying it's only a diff, that's the only difference, is two and, 2 and a half million dollars between geothermal-
Construction cost, and of course you have-
And the H, and the standard HVAC?
Right.
Really?
I think that might have been unclear-
It was unclear to me because I just guessed down this year and-
-that we were spending that much in a dish and two-
They sent it, they sent it. I know, just still, you gotta, you know, how mu- how much crap can you read in one day, right? So, so the point, the point is, uh, so just understanding that difference. I mean, that's kind of, that's sort of kind of getting to what we're trying to deal with here. You guys are going to do whatever you want to do with your money, we just got to give it to you, and I got to understand what we're giving. So, so, so I understand there's different parts of the geothermal. The pump house part, right? And, and so-
Right, because you guys are familiar with that. I mean-
Right.
The fire station, the sheriff's office, River Walk, I mean, so, so you're familiar with geothermal, yeah?
Right. I just want to make sure I understand that, you know, where the price is, how the price difference is, because in the end, though, there's somebody's going to, I'm going to ask it, nobody else does, it's going to be what, you know, the benefit, cost benefit for this.
Right. I mean, part of it, and I'm not sure if we've shared this yet, I mean, TAB High School was the most expensive building to run.
So when you say that, how, how much expensive? What is that, what's that number?
Yeah, so, Bill, do you have the exact number? I don't know if you have the exact number.
I did, I had to ask Dr. Carroll for it, but I, it didn't come in this, so I was going to ask tonight.
And I apologize, but, but those numbers are based on this. So when you look at TAB High School and you look at Bruton High School, they're essentially the same building, same footprint. And I think the difference is one gym.
Or half a gym.
Half a gym. And there is, uh, you know, a smaller enrollment, but that also, uh, can make it more expensive to heat in the winter. But looking at those two, just to give you an example, uh, Bruton, over the last three years, has spent 115,000 on electricity, 128 and 161.
Okay, what is 128 and 161? What does that represent?
115, 128, 161.
That's your last three years.
Three years?
For a total of 405,000 over the three years.
Okay.
TAB, 206, 234, 267, for a total of 709,000. So each year, it's over 100,000 more to operate TAB High than Bruton. Like I said, not exactly apples to apples, pretty darn close.
Yeah.
And Bruton has geothermal.
Right, that's right.
What does Bruton have?
Geothermal.
Geothermal, yeah, it does have geothermal.
So we feel like the geothermal question has been answered a long time ago. That it's going to give you more efficiency, and it's also going to live past the life of the system that we'll be putting in this go-around. Because the next time you go to put it in, your wells are already there.
That's right.
So when you say live pa- how much passed?
I'm not aware of a, the, the end date. We haven't had to replace anything, uh, any well fields that we've put in.
Have you all had to do that yet?
Changes we've had to do are just supplement. Seaford, we added to the geothermal.
Okay, so when you talk about replacement then, after a thing has already been put in, and then you come back years later for replacement, what are you talking about?
It's the same thing that you, you're putting in now, except for the fact-
Except the wells.
That you're not doing the wells, you're not having to do the, uh, pump house. And, uh, and there's some electrical, uh, component to that.
Okay, so, in total, this geothermal well is going to cost 37.9 million? Is that the whole, I said well, the whole system?
No. And so the, the construction costs alone, now this isn't your design and your contingency, right, which would be another, uh, 10% each, is, uh, the, if we went with a standard HVAC construction, it would be 12 and a half million, and the, uh, the geothermal runs just short of 15.
So where, where did that number come from then?
Say that in, the 12 and a half?
12 and a half and 15, that's at the bottom of that table, Mr. Jury.
Oh, yeah, yeah, right.
Construction only.
So based on comparison to Bruton, if you switch TAB to geothermal, you're saving $100,000 annually?
Annually, we're going to save over 100,000, uh, right out of the gate, in our operational funds.
At TAB High School, $100,000 a year?
A year.
But you're going to spend $15 million to do that.
Correct. But we would, but we would be spending 12 and a half anyway.
There's actually 3 million over, uh-
Remember, the HVAC system is 27 years old. It's pa- it's already past its life expectancy from when we would replace an HVAC. Because those are typically between 20 and 25 years.
So we're spending, so, kind of, sort of get into what you were talking about, but getting to the, the 2 and a half, basically it's two, if I, 2 and a half million more to save, and save $100,000 a year, okay? Okay, it's starting to make some sense.
Sheriff's building cost was geothermal.
And the HVAC would have to be replaced before you have to do anything with, with the geothermal.
Now, all this, this is going to be captured in, um, there's $3 million somewhere, we're going to do, take it out of the, what's that fund, the-
Revenue stabilization.
Revenue stabilization fund, $3 million in cash, right?
Mr. Bowen, was it fi- I thought we were contributing 5 million?
There's 5 million.
Right.
Okay, thing I saw was three, so it's going to be 5 million in cash.
Three for next year. And, and I think it's important to remember, when you look at the CIP-
Right.
What we're bringing to, what we brought to our board, they approved, now we're bringing to you, is only that one grant. Everything else is a-
I don't call them on what column you're talking about, but what, how much, what are we talking about?
60.
Current year, just like I tell you when we talk about the CIP, we're only talking about what's in that current year CIP, '26. Everything else is a plan.
3 million, that's 3 million in the currency.
Cash for the schools.
Cash, okay, so I'm back to where, okay, so the 3 million, uh, is going in cash, the rest of it's going to be debt, it's going to be debt, right? Carry is debt. Um, and that's where we see that little bump up in the percentage, we should go from whatever 7.9 to 8.9, which is just underneath our cap, right? Right?
I believe so. Is that correct?
Okay.
Right.
All right, so, when, and then if I understand he's correct, the, that, 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 that won't come due until about, the first payment's like in '29?
It's two years after completion of the project.
So the project is going to be completed when?
So we believe the first payment come to Teresa '28 or '29?
Well, I just said that.
'28.
'28.
So the first payment comes due at '28, and that's going to bump up our debt payment 1.7 million?
I think it's closer to 3 million. 40 million dollar project over a 30-year bond is about 3 million a year.
Well, I think you were just talking about the first year, but also each year debt is falling off the plan, so it's not-
That's why I'm only talking this one year. I'm not talking about the future, you're going to, they're dropping off.
This project will generate about $3 million of cost, but your debt load continues to drop down.
Debt load drops, well, I've been taking, I'm dealing with it, the wolf is closest to the sled, and this is the wolf. So, um, so it's going to be about 1.7 million debt, that payment will come due at '28, right?
It's interest only in '28.
On '28, that's just the first, that's the first part of this payment that we're looking at on the, the '39. So there's no value, I'm trying to think, based on that, um, in '28, we're going to have a, a requirement increase in our, our, uh, not revenue, but expenditures of 1.7 million dollars built-ins coming due, okay? So if something doesn't come off the book, and we got, and that shows up, then we're going to have about, probably about, that time's going to be one cent on tax rate. Because I, depending on 1.3, so a couple of years replacements go on, it's going to be about one, another, uh, just one cent, right?
Well, I just want to clarify that. So because there's debt falling off in future years as the TAB High debt comes on, there's not going to be a big spike in '28. That's the first year we make our TAB pay, uh, first payment on TAB High School for the '26 work. But you're not going to see a big bump in debt service because the, we have other debt that's fallen off that year.
Yeah, but we, from the chart you showed us, that it jumps.
'29.
That's '29, okay, so that's-
In '29, we see the increase.
And that's been taken in the whole, the whole project?
Right.
Right? Okay. So we'll see the increase, but that'll be what, 1.7 again?
Combined, as a result of TAB High School, it's going to be about 2 and a half million dollars more in debt service.
Okay, so 2 and a half, okay. That's 3 million we're talking about, okay. So will we address, do we, do we address, when, so when will we address this, in 2008 or 2009?
'28?
Yeah.
Right. So for the budget for '28, we'll have to accommodate, we'll have to accommodate an extra debt load.
All right, so I just, just putting this together, but, but, and all, all this but being said, okay, the expenses to do this is something, um, I guess we got to say it's something we got to do because of the cost, because we, if you push it off and let it go, then I'm, I'm expecting things to get worse.
I think that's one of the things that, that we should be so proud of as a county is, we've managed over the last, at least I can speak to the last 11 years and prior, um, this county and the school division have worked close to maintain our facilities. I mean, we've really done a great job of that, whether it's a roof, HVAC system, major systems. We've also done, you know, some, um, you know, ma- um, updating or upgrading, you know, libraries and other spaces in the schools to, to bring those things forward. Um, we've looked at our athletic facilities. We've done a lot of great work. You all, I appreciate you supported, um, the, all the changes to all of our high school auditoriums. I mean, that is a massive change. I mean, they, they've, they've never been done, like in 72 years, 72 years, I'm sorry, since 1972, and, well, 50, 54 years. So, so knowing that we were upgrading lighting and seats and all those things, and the curtains in there are falling and shredding apart. We have chairs at your high school that kids sit in that are breaking. So we really appreciate your support with that. So it's one of those things where we've done such a great job of, of keeping up with those things. We're in a much better position than many other school divisions that, you know, their, their schools are crumbling, so to speak.
But that's a cost to keep up with that.
There is definitely a cost, and I was going to-
Right, right now, over, for a three-year average for TAB High School, we're spending about $235,000 a year on energy costs. You could spend that, that price for the next 64 years before you spend $15 million on upgrade. So at what point do you do, go all in and revamp the whole thing and live with that? that, and because then if you're saving a hundred thousand dollars a year, if that gets you a hundred, hundred, a hundred thousand dollars a year savings, then you're even more decades long before you, before you recover, recover the, recover that cost, and that's just on the principal, not even including the interest, um, is there an option where we do piece parts, we work to, can we work our way into it?
And the geothermal?
Not geothermal, you have to, you have to reg, regular HVAC do that, bud.
Twelve and a half million dollars.
What's that?
Regular HVAC is twelve and a half million.
Do you have to do it all at once, can you break down the piece parts, do you have to rip out all of the, all of the, uh, duck work if you're gonna keep, if you're gonna stay on regular, regular HVAC?
Yeah, I guess that all depends on what you want for the students, and what you want for the staff in the building, and the community that uses the building on the weekends.
So what is, so financially speaking, that, and by answer to one aspect, so what is the, 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 the personnel impact of not doing it?
What do you mean by the personnel impact?
Well, I mean, are, are we sitting around and, and coached, are we, do we have to have, bring fans in, I mean, energy cost is one thing, but it, you know, is it, is it interrupting the learning experience today with the way the school is conditioned?
Yes, I mean, when, when it's, when it's thirty-five degrees outside or thirty-two degrees, it's, it's really cold in that school, and when it's eighty-five degrees, it's really, really hot in that school, again, it's a twenty-seven year old system, so, again, I guess if I could, if I could step back for a second, my job as superintendent is to assess all of the facilities every year, we, we have a team that does that, then they develop a capital improvement plan with the help of all of your staff in the county, we go through and assess that and make really hard decisions each year for out years, we went from a ten year to a six year, which made it, I think, more challenging for you all, and it made it more challenging for us, we have to prioritize these things every year, and once we do that, we sit down with finance folks, like I mentioned earlier, Mr. Bellamy, Ms. Goodwin, and Ms. Owens, we sat for two months to come through where the debt service, to make this project work, so, as far as, Mr. Bowen, as far as your comment related to can we phase this in, the, the process is what Mr. Bowen shared earlier, the process was we do all of these steps, we bring that to the CIP team, our board votes on it, we bring that to you, and then your decision is at the end to say, either you approve it, you don't approve it, you put a number on it, and then we'll go back and we'll figure out what we're gonna do based on the five of your decision, I mean, essentially it's as simple as that, right, so, if you put a number on it, then we'll, my team will have to go back and work with architects, engineers, et cetera, and then work with our board on figuring out how that will work, we'll bring that back to the county and do those numbers all again, but, but as far as sitting at this table, talking about phasing that in, I can't, I don't have a, I don't, I can't figure that out because I don't know a number, and I don't know what's approved, what's not approved.
I understand that, but we, we can't put a number on until this, this conversation.
I would also add that if you're going to spread it out, then we're back to the original discussion, or we're gonna have disruption over five years, but also, every time you push something back, you've got the other eighteen school, or seventeen schools that you have to deal with, with their deferred maintenance gets pushed back, so you end up getting a snowballing effect down the line at, at some point.
I would think somewhere here you would have thought about, um, and it's interesting, um, Stephen's comment, uh, the, the one thing I think, I'm thinking of my house, if I, uh, you know, if I have a bunch of air conditioners, do I replace them all, or do I get them one, one at a time, and then wait for the other one, do I wait to fail, or, before I run out and get it, uh, but I, one thing I do know is, what you buy now is not gonna be cheaper than what you buy later.
Thank you.
The service you get now is not gonna be cheaper than what you get later, so what you're gonna end up, I suspect, if you phase it in, you have to be careful of the fact that it may end up costing you more money in the long run, it's like buying a car on it, on, on, with a loan, you know, the car costs maybe fifteen, twenty, let's say it costs twenty thousand dollars, but you get to paying off twenty thousand dollars over six, seven years, how much is that gonna cost you, so, I mean, these are factors that are, to me, something has to be considered.
And the, and the phase in line of thought is, like you just said, do you replace it when it fails, or do you, or do you pre, um, prevent it maintenance, you know, so, I mean, how much of what we have, I'm looking at this, the chart, you know, how much here doesn't work today?
Well, we're kinda getting down into, you know, you know, it's whether the school's gonna convince us to give, to give them that amount of money, but, uh, I, I'm, yeah, there's a lot of concerns, um, and kinda put it in another perspective, today's paper, I think it was today's paper, where they talked about, um-
Consolidating ten schools in one place?
Yes, I saw that.
Uh, one, the one thing that got my attention was the estimated cost of building a high school.
What was the number?
Two hundred and fifty million dollars.
I mean, that's, that's gonna be a real, um, that's gonna be something that, for, again, not tomorrow, but that is gonna be, I mean, York High School is an old building.
I'm amazed at what you've done, and the fact that you haven't had to rebuild the school, um, I mean, when I was raised in Jacksonville, Florida, the schools that my, that was my aunt graduated nineteen thirty-six or something like that, and the school's still there, it's a ninety school, and they've, of course, they've revamped the school, but the building, I could walk into it, and it's still there, so, it does, schools are expensive, so-
It's amazing-
So when I looked at this, almost fifty million dollars, I'll just use a round number, okay, fifty million dollars is, what portion of this is actually rebuilding the school, I mean, it's, I, I just look at it as like, it's not even a quarter, it's a fifth of what the school would cost, because the rule I've used has been, and how it's changed since we've been on the board, it used to be only like twenty-eight million dollars to build an elementary school, that's down, and that was, and you have seventy-five million to build a high school, and then that's gone into the hundreds of millions now, so these schools are getting more expensive as we go, and this has only been in twenty years or so.
Kellum High School was built in twenty fourteen for, I wanna say a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. Yes, I wanna deal that with you.
I'll take that, sold.
I could disrupt a meeting anytime. Hundred and fourteen million, and now you're saying today, it's, I mean, it's eleven years later, two hundred and fifty million dollars, so, yeah, I completely understand that.
Nothing yet to check in the long run.
It doesn't, also, keep thinking a perspective too, it was only, what, two, three years ago that we finished construction on a brand new state-of-the-art sheriff's office, I think we, we, that cost like twenty-five million dollars, and we're looking to spend fifteen million dollars just to geothermal at, at one school, so it, I'm trying to wrap my head around-
That's not accurate, that's not accurate, we're not, we're not spending fifty million on just geothermal, there's-
Fifteen?
Oh, I thought you said fifty on it.
No, 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 fifteen, fifteen, yeah, fifteen. Sorry, my glossed accent kicked in.
You said fifteen, I got it, I heard it fifteen.
Sorry about that.
Well, this is the difference, what takes us from fifteen, I know some of it's A and E and, and contingency, but what takes us from fifteen to forty-eight?
Right, so, so to, well, forty-eight is not a number that we talked about-
Forty-eight's not a number, it's forty-three.
Forty-five, forty-five. Forty-five point eight-eight, how's that?
I've got forty-three point one.
I included the previous year.
Regardless, let's get-
Turf field, oh, you, you can't, because the turf field is being ta, is being funded out of revenue stabilization money, I believe, correct, Mr. Bowen?
No, that was out of bonds, but it was-
No, that was out of bonds, but we-
I'm sorry, yep.
You know, that's where the, the turf field, and we were working towards graft, and right now that's paused because of some, uh, problems with, uh-
Waterworks.
Waterworks, as far as runoff concern, but that was seen as a separate project, that wasn't seen as a part of the renovation, um, so it, why don't we, so when you ask the question, why did it, where is the expansion, I, I think you have to look at the CIP, okay, we've got the, we've listed it out into seven parts, there's the geothermal infrastructure, that's the well field, the LED lighting conversion and painting, and the LED's gonna save us a good bit of electrical cost also, there's the gym entrance that I mentioned earlier that's in the back, that will include the geothermal pump house, there's the geothermal conversion and HVAC renovation and electrical upgrade, because remember, that, that switchgear and related, uh, related electrical things are, uh, over fifty years old, then you've got, we are looking to put a new entrance on the front that will, will have the new learning commons and a Kiva, so it can be for a community room, or it can be for professional development, or just a multipurpose room for the school, and then in the wake of that, if we, if we put that new entrance in the front, then we can convert the old library to, you said four, but it's actually four to six classrooms, depending on how, how we go there, and then there's the, uh, the roof repair and prepping it for solar, if we wanna go for solar, if we go for solar, it's a little more money, we're the ones laying the money out, uh, but we'll actually have a quicker return on investment, because then that two hundred and thirty-six, uh, thousand a year disappears.
So let me go back to the geothermal part, the CO, the ROI, in, in what you've given us, you sent us, I see the real ROI as twenty-five years.
Would you like to use the term, return on investment, because we know what ROI is, but the people who watch us don't necessarily do.
All right, return on investment.
Thank you.
So, it, it would be twenty-five years, basically, because we're gaining a hundred thousand dollars, and we're basically paying two point five million to get that, so the return on investment's twenty-five years.
If that's assuming a static, uh, electrical rate, correct?
It is, that's right, and that could change, as we know, it will change, um, but the other part of that, that I think has to be considered as well, in that twenty-five years, we're not gonna have to be replacing HVAC systems-
That's right.
-because we have a geothermal system, so we do have to keep that in mind, I love geothermal, I think it's a fantastic, one of the best inventions out there, as far as I'm concerned. So I think the geothermal part, to me, probably is a no-brainer, so, it's the other stuff that's added to it that makes it look like it's overblown, so, but the geothermal, if it's only costing us two and a half million dollars above what we would already cost page for H, regular HVAC, to me, that's, that's a no-brainer.
Right, but one thing I had asked about too, what is the mean time between failure, or the lifespan of some of the components of the geothermal, the, the heat pump, um, the, the chillers and so forth, I guess I have chillers with, uh, with, uh, geothermal, but, um, I mean, th, those things break down and they, and they fail, um, and they have to be replaced, do they last plus twenty-five years, do we, do we know what the-
I would ask, I would ask Mr. Fuller, because, um, with Riverwalk, twenty-five years with geothermal?
It'll be twenty this year, we haven't had any issues.
We done any, what kind of maintenance have we done on that?
None of the geothermal that we've put in, if we had, anything other than the normal, you know, lifecycle replacements.
Same with pumps and-
What, what's, what's the normal lifecycle replacement we're talking about?
Where's our engineers?
Generally, after you bury the wells, you'll have a loop system?
Yep.
And the loop system, as long as you don't cut it or break it, it's gonna go in a parking lot, I wouldn't be surprised if it went forty or fifty years.
I mean, what about the pumps themselves, they run it all the time?
Pumps themselves are a lot more, uh, efficient, and they last a lot longer than what you'd have in the old system, when you start talking about, uh, compressors, capacitors-
You talk about it, in-ground well.
In-ground, the one here at York Hall is buried in the parking lot, we haven't had a problem with it, I, your call was done before I was here, so it's over twenty-four years.
Same way with electric pumps, if you've got an in-ground electric-
If the closed-loop system is intact, you just have to replace the wells in the system inside, so it's probably costing you half as less in thirty or forty years than it would be to put in a conventional system.
It just hurt, it just hurts your heart if you, if your return on investment in twenty-five years and turn around and spend the millions of dollars that you swap back, just like, finally pay your truck off, and then, then the engine let go, let go on you, so.
One thing, as far as the renovation, you know, Seaford was twenty million dollars, and it's seventy-nine thousand square feet or something like that, or, or TAB High's like a hundred and fifty, it's, it's almost twice the size, that's one of the things that I've noticed recently, that in comparison, based on the size of the building, the costs aren't really that much different.
Well, if I can get back to the cost then, uh, just first on the, uh, the total bond load, I want you to, remind you that it ends up at eighty-seven point five on this CIP, it's only six hundred thousand than we had on the CIP two years before, and we've also, at the forty-three point one, we've also kicked in five point four, uh, on that plan, so that's actually, I think, two hundred thousand cheaper on the bond load from the previous year, even though the, we had expanded the project.
Okay, what caused that?
The-
Change, I mean, why is it cheaper?
We put in five point- Because we're putting in five point four.
Million cash.
We have no cash, right, so, but we understand, and we, and we absolutely agree, this is a big number, and we have, uh, no, um, desire to spend that much, because every dollar that we spend on this project defers the opportunity to spend it on others, correct? So, uh, we, we recognize that, and we believe this is a conservative estimate, so, some things that we're doing to try to drop that cost are, number one, we've already, uh, for the geothermal well field and for the LED replacement, we went straight to engineers to design that, and, um, and we're gonna contract with them directly, so that we're not paying the general contractor premium, also, the turf field, we saw as a separate project, because we were intending to do one at Grafton also, but when we go to bid, we're gonna bid, well, actually, we are, we're gonna, we're about to, uh, release that bid, uh, next week, I believe, we're gonna pair the LED lighting with the turf field, have one company do that, so that we can grab some savings there, in addition to all those, starting with number two, we have an A and E firm now, uh, we have had one meeting with them, and we are trying to check their thirty thousand square foot, uh, or, uh, not square foot, thirty thousand foot, uh, vision of what they wanna do, uh, those rough estimates, and we're trying to make sure that we are on the same page, we, uh, we take issues, a strong word, but we question some of the estimates that, that we've been given, and we are talking to them about reducing scope where we can, and making sure that we're on the same page, so that we give you the quality and the value that we've given on similar projects, even though this will be on a bigger scale, uh, and then, of course, after that, if we reduce the, the price on the, the project as a whole, then the A and E cost would drop, because we're looking at roughly ten percent, and the same thing on the contingency, that would drop, so, uh, every, every little bit helps as far as dropping that, and then also, we mentioned earlier that, uh, the competitive market of, uh, competitive, uh, construction bidding and following negotiation, that we can look for savings there, uh, also, uh, we mentioned that part of this is part of the locker room renovations that we're doing across the division, we've held off on the Bruton locker room renovation, because it has a similar, uh, footprint with Bruton, we use the A and E work from this one to design the Bruton before we spend the money on the Bruton, uh, the Bruton, uh, renovation, and two, the last two are kinda long shots, uh, there's a state school construction assistant program, we have applied a couple of times and not gotten it, uh, but maybe, you never know, it could be us, uh, the next time we're out.
This is our year.
And, yeah, and then the, uh, and then the last one.
I like the last one.
The last one, I, I hope is still around, uh, we've, uh, we are now open to getting federal energy credits, as long as they're still, uh, a part of the federal program for the geothermal conversion, if we go for the solar, same thing, there would be more, but just for the geothermal alone, we're looking at eight hundred and fifty thousand, uh, that's, you know, I, I don't know the, the details, Teresa, on, uh, exactly, but that's what we're, that's what we're estimating, so around that, and that would come off the price also, so we're hoping all of this will-
That's a one-time payment?
And it, it's a, it's a program that came in with the, um, Inflation Rate Act, and it's kind of a little bit on hold right now, um, for the geothermal, but it's, it'll be, um, it's thirty percent of the cost of the geothermal.
So save a solar.
And then the solar is, is on top of that, it's a different percentage and different per, it's within the same, um, act, but it's, it has a few different rules, um, I will say that, that money does come in much later, we gotta finish the project, so.
Well, maybe that's for the next project.
It's repayment.
All right, uh, that concludes our report, of course, we welcome any other questions you might have.
So we, did we get onto all the detail we needed to know for the, for the forty-four million, or whatever the number is now?
Thirty-one. Dr. Carroll read, uh, every, every, I think, I believe there were seven different lines for that.
Seven, seven different components that should be broken out that way on the CIP, uh, but we could certainly send that along to make sure that you have a copy of that.
Yeah, I think it's in our-
On our CIP or your CIP?
Yeah, I don't think it's on our-
It'll be our CIP, if you don't have a copy-
It's our CIP?
Yes.
So, I think one, one thing in reflecting on sort of what we've gone through this year, uh, one great learning lesson for us is our, um, descriptions that we're writing are, making sure that our descriptions in our CIP are, um, very easy for people to understand what they are, so we're, we're, we, we, that's noted, we're gonna certainly work on that moving forward to next year, because there were things that I had to say, what is this one, help me, does that cover this as well as that, so we, we, we realize that, we're gonna work on that.
We were confused.
Yeah.
So on the turf, so on the turf lighting, um, turf, turf lighting, I guess, as opposed to whatever, what's the normal lighting you use, incandescent lighting or what?
The LEDs.
You're gonna replace it with this?
There is no light out there right now.
There's no lighting out there right now.
Okay, that's, okay.
So we're putting, the turf field is being constructed now, and then we're gonna add lighting, it'll be LED.
Now, that turf field, is that gonna be available to other school events, or is that just a practice, we're just doing it for practice?
The whole part of that was, the whole reasoning behind that was, we, we just re-turfed Bailey Field, and I wanna say, two years ago, because this life expectancy was out, so we, we redid that, then we knew we needed to do something at Bruton, because it was a, I mean, it's called the pit for a reason, I mean, it was a mud pit.
And the drainage.
And the drainage there was, was horrific, so we knew we needed to do that, and we thank you all for that, because that was a, Mr. Morgan, um, sort of, and I, discussion for, for that, for those dollars for that, to put the McGrath in a TAB, to say that Bailey is overused is an understatement, Bailey, and what I mean for that is for York, Grafton, and TAB, getting access to that field, I mean, it is, it is round the clock, especially in the spring, when you have track, soccer, and every other sport that you can think of, trying to, and, and in the fall, when you have football, and other, you know, field hockey, and all those types of things, um, so it was, part of it was to- So it was, part of it was to ease the use on Bailey, but also to give the kids, the kids in community at Grafton and Tab a home field. So that they didn't have to drive all the way to Bailey for every single game, right?
So we're going to be playing, we'll?
Yes, they'll be playing varsity, boys and girls soccer there. They'll be playing, uh, field hockey there. They'll be playing JV football there. And then it could be used for, you know, community use. You know, we have, we have programs that use TAB middle right now for, um, you know, uh, football for younger kids and other, so.
You, uh, the traditional, even college, if a high school and colleges, that you have the field in the middle and around it, you have the track.
Yep.
Okay. But, oh, you got it, that, uh, TAB, you got the track off to one place, the field on another, right?
No.
I mean, what's the field you're talking about right behind the high school, right?
No.
TAB?
That's, it's behind the tennis courts.
Okay.
You know what tennis courts are at TAB? They're, where, where that is, we just re, we, we redid all of our tracks a few years ago.
Okay.
So the, the turf field is going to be where that is. The truth be told, the field behind TAB High School, directly behind it, where soccer and field hockey play, it's not even a regulation.
Right.
Field. So we have 11 state championships, I believe. Is that 11 for field hockey? And now they'll be able to play on a, you know, full-size field in their own.
They're going to have to have stands no matter what.
Uh, we're, they're going to have similar stands that are on the soccer field now. There'll be a smaller, we're not putting major stadium.
No.
No, it's for the, it's for those, those sports that I mentioned that don't, um, typically you're not going to have, you know, 5,000 people there. It's going to be a smaller number of those.
Okay. Any other questions?
I had one other question, but it wasn't related to facilities.
Oh, what's the relation of, you can ask it.
Well, I went through the salary comparison that, uh, I think it was Dr. Carroll presented back in January.
I think it was Dr. Wright's.
I used to do that one.
The, the question that's obviously raised when you look at this is, why is York at the top of the list for starting teacher salaries of the entire regional comparison? We, we are the highest.
Is the re, entire regional or is that just the peninsula?
No, no, it's the, I saw that. It's regional.
Yeah, so my first question would be, I, I thought we were just talking about the capital project, but I'll be happy to answer this question.
We had lots of questions for you.
That's fine, I'll, I'll, I'll hold a press conference.
I heard two different answers. Are we talking the peninsula or are we talking the whole Hampton Road?
He, he said region, but it's act, this, this is peninsula.
Okay.
Correct. So, so if I could provide some, um, some perspective. So when you say number one, rank number one in, on the peninsula, that's 100% not true.
But that's what the chart shows.
It's not accurate. When you, when you look at this chart, and, and I'll, I'll share, I'll, I'll clarify this, I don't know if this is on camera, but there's 31 steps on our bachelor scales, zero to 30. We look at every single one of those. So when they're, when they're highlighted, that means that you're in the top three, okay? So of the 31 steps, the only step where we're first is the first step. And we're in first place on the step zero, that means it's a, it's, somebody came out of college, it's their first year teaching, right? We're number one in the peninsula for sta- starting salary by $25. Now, when you go through the rest of this, which is how we assess, um, the pay scales, um, I just want to make sure I have my facts straight so I give you the exact right number. So for the bachelor scale, again, we have one step out of 31 that's ranked first. We have 11 steps here that are ranked second, 17 steps that are ranked third and two steps that are ranked fourth. So again, to make the comment that we're the highest paid is not accurate.
I said entry level. I did say entry level.
I'm, I'll tell you what, here's my question too. Where do you think teachers should be paid? Where do you think York County teachers should be paid?
Well, our understanding was that we would be in the top third.
Right. That's our goal.
Okay. We appeared to be higher than that based on this, this spreadsheet.
That's not accurate, Mr. Holroyd.
No, based on what you just read. Now for our, for the, on the peninsula, the way you just read it is that it's only in that one category, maybe it's one middle category.
It's one step. The scale is 31 steps. We have one step where we're first and it's step zero by $25. Every other step is not first. But again, my question would be where, you know, where do you think our teachers should be paid? Should they be first, second, third? Where do you think they should be paid?
Should we be 5% higher than JCC? Because that's what it is consistently all the way down the chart. I don't know. I think that's a lot. I think we should be closer to them.
Higher?
Closer to JCC. They're, they're four, four to 5% lower.
So you're saying?
We're over.
So let me get this straight.
So one of the strategies we have used, um, in assessing teacher salary scales and why we do these comparisons is so that we can, uh, attract and retain teachers. And, um, and this is why we show just the teacher scale only. So we have fewer vacant positions because of the work that we've done with these scales. It used to be when we did these presentations, when I first came here, it was a regional comparison. And we would compare ourselves to all the school divisions in Region Two, which included Virginia Beach, Chesapeake.
Portsmouth, Norfolk, Suffolk, Calhoun Lake.
We could not keep up with those school divisions. And so we pulled, we pulled that comparison out and focused and looked at and said, okay, the majority of the teachers that we're hiring are actually coming from the peninsula schools. So we're recruiting a lot from Newport News and Hampton and some from Williamsburg, James City County. But it was important for us to be competitive in that, in that manner because we needed teachers. There is a national teacher shortage that we're all dealing with and we're all fighting for, um, the same limited pool of teachers. So that has helped us tremendously in our efforts to have qualified teachers in our classrooms with our students, not, not para educators, not substitutes, not long-term subs, but qualified teachers.
The struggle, the struggle we have is when you look at our firemen, when you look at our deputies, when you look at our county staff, they're all well below our comparative neighbors. 5% below JCC, not 5% above. So we struggle in terms of, as we continue to push money towards the teachers, we're taking it from somewhere else. Is that fair? And that's the struggle that this board has. I'm, I understand you're looking after the teachers. That's your job.
Mm-hmm.
Our job is to also compare all the rest of the starting salaries.
I, I would say it's not just we're looking after the teachers, it's what's best for the students. Because if we don't have the qualified teachers in the class, then the students are not being served. And that's, that's where the struggle.
Thing, I, I heard what you said about looking at, couldn't keep up with it, but, you know, you provided us the sheet, okay? And, and so just logically, I mean, I, I don't go for the peninsula because we got, what, 250,000 teachers positions going short. There's a shortage of teachers to fill across the United States. And so, I mean, I go for the whole area because you're competing with Williamsburg, I mean, with, not only Williamsburg, but with, uh, Virginia Beach, Chesapeake and all that. And I thought it was kind of interesting because I know historically, our position was to be maybe in the bottom third. I mean, I mean, kind of, that was what I, I saw salaries. And but when I compared it, when I looked at this, I do nine, nine municipalities at the top of this bachelor sheet, okay? And I saw, I went down every step and I compared York County and it, out of the nine, for example, it was like six, eight, 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 seven, 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 six, 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 one, four, six, 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 six. So almost all the way down, eight, nine, and one ninth at the bottom, which means we're paying less comparative to the whole region.
Correct.
That we have to compete for, for the schools. Now, I'm going to ask you, I'll tell you, I think we're, teacher salaries ought to be at the top. But, you know, but we do, how can we, how can we provide such great quality in our education system, rank so damn high in our quality education system? Number one, all the Hampton Roads, number three in the whole state of Virginia, and about 137th or something like that in the United States. How do we get that with so low salaries? Why do people come here, want to teach for lower salaries?
I think that's a great question. I mean, I would love to take you all to the school so you could ask the teachers and staff directly.
I'm trying to understand it. I mean, it's not, it's more than money. Okay, it's quite, it's a community you live in, the students you have to teach, the, you know, you feel safe in the classroom. There's all these factors going to play there. I mean, that's, I have to make an assumption. I'm, I've not been a classroom teacher, uh, for our elementary, or for our schools.
But the, but the parity is important too, like Mr. Holroyd said. As part of, a lot of what drives that safety is we have school resource offices. We, we pay, pay for them and we give them a salary to keep, keep them retained as well. Um, you know, have, have.
I understand you, so you want to pay more for, okay, so, see, we got to be careful here when you're talking pay comparisons, okay? You got to be really careful.
No, it's, it's, no, comparison is, is parity.
What's more important? If you got to pay money, you're going to get to this, this is a dangerous question to get into. So the question is, is it, what's more important? A policeman, a fireman, a teacher, a doctor? Which one do you pay more for?
I tell you what.
I mean, that's a serious question.
And I, and I, I'll respond back. At, at two o'clock in the morning, something goes bump in the night, you want that deputy there postace. At two o'clock in the morning, you have a medical emergency, you want fire, life, rescue there. At two o'clock in the morning, that sewer line breaks and you got sewer backing up in your, in your, in your basement, you want that public works guy there. They're all important.
And that all falls under what you just called is the hierarchy of needs, okay? That can be, that can, I mean, be described that same way. So it's the supply and demand and what you need to run, to run the government.
Right.
Okay, that's why, you know, I talked about the other day, that salary was 340 some thousand dollars for that guy that only had five employees. Well, I mean, it's, you know, it's the supply and demand. And right now, teachers are getting more because they're harder to come by. Chief over here can tell you why we had to, we had to go out and look for 24 new fire, firemen because we weren't paying them enough. So how do we solve that problem?
Part of it is, is trying to remain competitive.
That's right.
Every, every year, you try to remain competitive because I know that, you know, I know that Michelle Mitchell in Newport News, I know what Raymond Haynes is doing in Hampton. I know what Artie's doing in Pecoson and I know what Owen Heron was doing up in WJCC. So we talk about these percentages and.
I'm sure you do.
Where everyone's going to be and, you know, it's a poker game. Sometimes they'll come in and say, oh, I can only do two this year. And then the release of the paper is they did five, right? So, so there's those things. I mean, when you're talking about, when, yes, teachers, all of our staff are important, but when you think about bus drivers, I mean, they are, you think about that for a second. They're driving 75 kids, weaving around to, to get to where they need to get to. And if one school system goes up 50 cents, the other one better be watching and know, they better make that a consideration. So I think that that's just a challenge of where we are, whether it's the sheriff's office, fire and life safety, schools, any, any walk of county staff too. I mean, we're all looking for good people and we all know that money is one factor. The culture and climate and all those things are, are a big part of it as well.
Well, I mean, I'll, I'll, I'll come to it, but it, it, it actually is a great question that, that comes up about parity and all that. So we need five more deputies. Our sheriff right now has called everyone of you and indeed we need five more deputies, okay? We, how secure do we feel in our community? Okay, is a measurement of whether we provide five more deputies. But to provide five more deputies, we have to either cut something else out of the budget or we have to raise the tax rate higher because that's the only place money's coming from. So this is the tough job, the supervisors and anybody that has to deal with budgets, kind of to deal with. So, so these are things that we, this is not going to be easy, but we, we have to step up when we, when figuring out what we need. And I, and I put that plug in once you hear that, buddy. I, I heard you.
Wonderful, wonderful, Tom. Thank you very much for that plug. But what I'd like to say is thank you all very, very much for coming and spending the time with us today.
Thank you.
And if, if they have questions after today, I'm sure you'll be very happy to answer those for us.
I think every one of them has my cell number. Give me a call or.
Right. And the whole thing is we're all in this together.
That's right.
Because what do we do? We represent the citizens. So we all try to do the best we can. No one is excluded from that. Thank you very, very much for coming.
Thank you guys. Appreciate it.
Is that all, what? We're not adjourned yet.
I thought we were leaving. They, they can go though.
They can go. Unless you want to stay for all the garbage that we're going to.
Have a great day. Thank you all so much.
Stand up and do a lap. You'll feel better. Yeah, I think we need to.
Six o'clock departure. I have a 6:00 p.m. departure.
Dinner?
Yes.
It's freezing in here.
You have a good place to go?
Yes, of course.
Mark?
I'm, I'm working on our. I'm tablebing at six.
Okay. Well, the question is, I thought we had another presentation.
It's from me and it's, uh, in re, in response to the question that was asked after the presentation of my budget, uh, recommendation, recommended budget on the 18th. Um, that's, that's where we're at. Oh, shoot. I can't talk and drive.
Can you chew gum at the same time?
Not today, apparently.
That wasn't hands-free.
True. So, um, the board requested that I provide, uh, the impact of reducing the proposed real estate budget. Uh, 78 cents, which we will get to tonight, but I want, I do want to, uh, provide a couple of thoughts here. And first of all, uh, you know, we're, we're on this schedule where we've had, we had one meeting last week, we've had two this week, we have two scheduled next week. So this is, uh, this is a lot to do and I want to take opportunities to thank the staff, uh, not just the finance staff, but everybody that shows up for these meetings, video services staff, IT staff, all of those folks that are, that are helping us get you through this process. So I want to make sure they know that they're appreciated. Uh, one of the other comments I wanted to make based on, based on our meeting on Tuesday night was, uh, I'm glad to see all those, at the moment, not, uh, overwhelming. But I am glad that we have had a, a little bit of interaction with the public on this budget. Because it does, I know for me, it stops me and, and gives me a little bit different perspective on, on what we're doing here. So I, I want to be sure, one, one of the things that brought, it came to my attention on Tuesday night was, I heard a couple of folks say, well, they hadn't seen this or they hadn't seen that. So it's important for us to continue to deliver the core message through this. And I want to go back through that right here before I give the answer to, to Mr. Holroyd's question about what would the cut look like? So I, I want to talk a little bit about this and specifically, I want to talk about how the budget's put together, how the staff evaluates it and what that process looks like. So the evolution of the CIP. So it started in August of last year with the request for the departments to submit their CIP budgets. Then in October, there were CIP committee meetings, there were two of those. They make a recommendation to me and the county administration staff. It comes to us. Uh, this year, I know, uh, Greg Gillette and I sat down a couple of times and walked through this process. And then in December, I presented my preliminary recommendation to you. In January, at your board retreat, we had some discussion where you had input in that. In March, again, we did the same thing. Um, and now we're at, uh, the point where, as you called it the other day, further refinement. So we're, we're looking at it as well. And you will ultimately adopt the CIP, some version of it in May. So what I wanted to talk about a little bit before I talk about the other, the requested, I wanted to talk about what's happened in this. Because I know I've told you in the past that county staff has reviewed this. Theresa likes to use the word scrub. To me, I like the term cut, reduce, adjust. Depends on what you scrub with is how clean it gets. That's what concerns me. So I like to use those a little more definitive, at least that's the way they feel to me. So when the CIP committee looked at all the requests, and this includes schools, Dr. Carroll and, uh, Mr. Bowen were included in this committee. They came to the table as well. The senior staff looked at the CIP requests and came to the conclusion that on the county side, there was 19 million dollars were things that we could take out. Schools said roughly the same thing, 20 million, for a total of 40 million dollars. And if you want to know about some of the specific things, because some people don't believe, uh, exactly what you say unless you have details. So some of these things were reduced in scope. As an example, the Williamsburg Regional Library, we pushed that out and reduced the comp, the, the, uh, contribution to 250,000 dollars. We moved, uh, generator responsibility, the life cycle replacement from fire and life safety to public works. That allowed us to reduce the CIP by 1.3 million dollars. We slowed down the LED streetlight conversion projects that we have going on and reduced it by 250,000 dollars in next year. So that had a direct impact on 26, which we're talking about. And then, uh, in public works, we reduced the parking. And then in Public Works, we reduced the parking lot repair and grounds maintenance equipment replacement by five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that's just an example of reducing the scope. Some of the things that we delayed or deferred, synthetic turf conversion, which reduces by a million six, mobile data terminals, which is not the ones that are, we're gonna talk about here in a few weeks, but out into the future, year five, year six of the CIP. And then for the schools, some of the projects that they delayed, Queens Lake expansion by a year, York High School, the bus and NX projects by one year to start in FY thirty-one, graph and commons to start in a later year. And those are just some of the things that we actually did, the staff, senior staff took out of the budget, CIP budget. So then when it came to Greg and I, and some of the other senior staff, when we went through it, we came to it and said, these are the things that we think we should do. We could reduce this public safety building renovations. We could reduce transportation improvements. We could make some minor timing and cost adjustments. And by doing all those things, we could cut another six point two million out of it. Now, you all haven't even seen this yet, okay? You haven't seen this document yet, at this point.
Are we gonna get, you're gonna send this copy?
You can have the slides, yeah, certainly.
Thank you.
And so then I present the CIP to you. You all have the opportunity to discuss it at your retreat, and again, later at a work session. And based on the adjustments that you asked for, another six point seven million dollars was taken out of the CIP. So you can see that, and, and here are the real projects that have been impacted by that. So you can see that while there are some calls that we're not quite doing enough, this is real money. In the CIP, fifty-three million dollars from request. Some of it was request, new request, some of it were things that existed in the CIP prior. And we took those out because, for whatever reason, they did not make our priority list. But this is real money here. So.
How much of that fifty-three million dollars is applicable to FY twenty-six?
I don't, but we could talk about that, I could get you a number for that.
Appreciate it, yeah, thank you.
And do you know how much of that is totally gone or being pushed?
Teresa, is it reasonable that we could put that together?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm just curious, is what we've cut?
Move things forward for another year.
Are we just pushing it a year down?
Well, we're talking about, right.
We're gonna face that, we're gonna pay the piper at some point.
Yes, that's the problem.
So we need to, I would like to get that breakdown.
Sure. So this is one aspect of the budget, the CIP. So let's talk about the operating budget. So in October, we sat in this building with all the department heads and their staff that helped them produce their budgets. And I gave them an expectation of what I expected their budget to look like. And then in December, all those requests were due. January, the budget staff started meeting with the departments on their own. And then in January, February, they met with the budget committee. Doug, I'm watching. Watching o'clock, I'm watching. Okay? So in February of this year, you know, I've made the final decision. I, I gave this, with all these meetings we're having, it seems like ages ago, but it was just a week ago that I gave you my recommended budget. So here we are today, and we're working on further refinement, et cetera, with the idea that we will adopt a budget in twenty-five, May of twenty-five. So when the budget staff met with the departments, this is what they took out of the requests. They took two point one million dollars from the Sheriff's Office, Fire and Life Safety, Public Works. And, and those are the big three expenses internal of the county. Those are the big three. So they took two point one million. So when it came to me, I saw all the requests, et cetera. And so myself, along with Susan and Brian and Theresa, Greg Gillette, and the budget analyst, Sam, and Amy, thank you. We all went through that, so many people. So we all went through that. And what you've seen in some of my other slides is thirteen million that we did not fund. So there are some of the things that we did not fund.
Again, can we get the number that either we're pushing that down the road, or you're going?
This isn't a push down the road.
This is not.
This is, it didn't happen.
Okay.
It does not have to be pushed down the road.
Okay.
Yeah. Unlike the CIP, which is a multi-year project, this is only single year, so no, no push.
But, but if you go back, the, the second one, new full-time positions, we're gonna have to fund that at some point.
I hope so.
That's what I'm saying, we're pushing that three point six down the road.
Which one's this?
The second line item.
So this is.
We're, we're gonna have to do the career ladders. We're pushing that down the road. That's what I'm saying. We're gonna do half of the study implementation. We're pushing half of that down the road, is what I'm, that's the point I'm getting. At some point, we're gonna, we're gonna have to face this number again.
Or something could change in the environment that we don't have to do this.
Right, yeah, it's possible.
Right. So total operating budget reduction, fifteen point two million dollars. Add that to the other number, it's a big number. I think it was right close to seventy million dollars, as I recall.
And the only issue left is, does the board need to also weigh in on this and further reduce?
Yep, and that's, and that's what I'm getting ready to tell you.
Right.
Or weigh into it.
In twenty minutes or less.
In twenty minutes or less. I, I think generally I can do it. Okay. So this, this is what you asked for. I wanna be clear about this. These are not my recommendations. What you saw on the eighteenth was my recommendation. And I don't want you to infer because you've seen me do this, that I believe I should do it, because I don't. I think the right budget is the one you saw on the eighteenth. So I just wanna share that with you. But to honor your request, here it is. Now, I did it in half-cent increments, okay? So here you go. If you wanna cut a half cent from the seventy-eight cent tax rate that I've proposed, we'll reduce grounds maintenance two hundred thousand dollars. Now, I'll point out to you that.
These guys pick up garbage.
Yes, sir. That's what I'm getting ready to say. I wanted to point out to you that last year, grounds maintenance took a hundred and sixty thousand dollar cut. I put it back in the budget this year. And then as a, as a result of your request, I took it back out. I'm also recommending, if you're gonna do this, that you do remove the eBooks at the library. There's been a lot of discussion about that. You know what we are up against and what we would like to accomplish in that arena.
No way.
So that is the next item.
We gotta look through all this stuff.
So the debt, the debt, the Riverwalk stage was paid for with cash. We could turn it to debt, which would make it no impact on the twenty-six budget. So we could move that to debt status. And then the regional radio life cycle project, which is Mr. Hall's bucket of money, that when his infrastructure is ready for upgrades at the end of its life cycle, we have essentially created a savings account here to pay for that. So we don't have to finance all of it, or some portion of it.
So some of these, somewhere in here, I know you're gonna, you gotta tell us the impact, I mean.
That's what I'm trying to tell you.
Well, you tell me a radio, read life cycle.
So, well, as I just said, that pays for his infrastructure. If I take it out of the budget, we're gonna have to pay for it again somewhere.
Tell me the impact. It doesn't tell me the impact.
I'm assuming that you're gonna make it up at some point in time. But if you don't, you're jeopardizing the integrity of our nine-one-one radio system.
That's what you want.
That's what I was looking for.
Okay.
Or you have a higher payment when, when it comes to.
The tower didn't work anymore, something like that.
You haven't put a hundred percent towards it, therefore you have a big bill to pay.
This is taking money out of what we're gonna pay for. This doesn't mean we don't have the money when it comes time.
But we have the budget, the budget right now will pay for this.
Right, we, we're paying as we go along. Okay, so if, if you went to one cent, same with the grounds maintenance, same with the eBooks, same with the stage, the regional radio life cycle goes up to five hundred thousand dollars. There's a CIP item in the CIP that is cash, that's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for a master plan of Charles Brown Park. The neighborhood around the park has changed dramatically in the last twenty years. And other than a playground and, and a picnic shelter, that park is not. There's, there's a lot of space there that's unused, that could be, something else could be done with it, something else could be visioned with it. And we don't wanna miss the opportunity to do that. So this is a planning money for that item. Brian, do you have anything you wanna add to that?
Well, like, like Mark said, the neighborhood's changed. We also have two hundred and fifty-six homes coming in right down the road at Rose Hill. So this is the one real neighborhood park that we have. Kell Creek Park is the other. But all of our other parks are not in neighborhoods, or they're just athletic fields. Wolf Trap and Chispa Creek Park are athletic fields.
You know why I'm not sharing the town?
I know, you don't have any, I know. I'm working on it.
I have dense populations, and I got no parks.
I need some land, then we'll get you some. I need, we need some land.
Put one in your front yard.
I don't have a park.
I know.
I wanna hear about it.
Brian, anything else you wanna say about that?
Buy me some land, Tom, we'll get some.
Thank you. Okay, and the last item would be to reduce economic development CIP by eighty thousand five hundred dollars. That is actually would reduce the amount of money that economic and tourism development would have for business grants.
No.
Okay. If you went to one and a half cents, grounds maintenance, eBooks, stage, life cycle jumps up to five hundred thousand dollars, half a million dollars, that we would take away from that fund, that we would have to put back or face degradation in the system.
No, you have the same at one cent.
He just added to the bottom here.
Right, we're just adding two to get to the one and a half.
The one cent, it was also a half a million.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry I missed that point, thank you for making that.
It jumped from what, seventy-five to five hundred?
Roughly, yes. And so CIP, Charles Brown Park, the same as we just discussed. Now, the economic development CIP, we would reduce that by three hundred thousand dollars, which in effect would allow no grant available to local businesses. Fire and Life Safety and the Sheriff's Office would have to take a two hundred and fifteen thousand dollar cut in their operations budget of some nature. We, we'd have to discuss what that actually looks like. But as I mentioned earlier, Public Safety, Public Works, those are the big departments. If you want that kinda money, that's where we need to go. Because most of the other departments, such as Theresa's department, that's all people. They, they don't have the materials and the rest of the things that you find there. So. Two cents. Again, grounds maintenance, eBooks, stage, life cycle, radio life cycle stays at five hundred thousand. Charles Brown Park, economic development stays at three hundred thousand reduction. Fire and Life Safety, Sheriff's Office both lose two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in operations. And you would lose six hundred and forty-four thousand dollars in the CIP to make up the two cents in cash. So items that we had that were cash funded, we'd either, we'd have a couple options. We'd either have to sprinkle it around, everything that was cash funded, or we'd have to pick one or two items that would amount to that kinda money.
Why, why did you CIP cash reduction? Why wouldn't it come in the first half cent rather than the two cents?
I, I believe that's one of the most critical things that we, we should preserve.
Okay. It's the cash versus debt, debt funding, right?
I understand that.
Okay, but I just wanted to make sure I understood.
We have to keep moving, we can't stand still. There are things that the county needs, and we have to keep planning for the future. And the CIP is inviolate, as far as I'm concerned. We need to put more money into the CIP.
Have we normalized this, have we normalized the CIP yet post-COVID, or are we still behind? Because I know that we didn't fund the CIP for a long time because of uncertainties of COVID.
Susan, would you like to answer that?
Got back up yet?
Well, we took a one-year break during COVID.
Right, but that had, that had domino effect.
Yeah, yes. So I would say that, that, you know, we've talked about the CIP being a maintenance CIP. We're back to normalizing it to a maintenance CIP. Is it moving us forward? You know, that's the next step.
I would say no with all the cuts that we took in the CIP. Because we're, we're not just pushing out want-to-haves, we're pushing out some need-to-haves, too, like renovations and rehabs and things of that nature. So those are getting pushed as well. The only thing that's really staying in is the, you know.
Public safety.
Public safety and maintenance, you know, a little bit here for HVAC, a little bit here for roof repair, things like that.
Mark, did you finally answer that question I asked you about? About trolleys? Yeah. I did. So the trolleys will be paid for out of the tourism fund. So tourism money can only be used for tourism activities, so that will have no impact on the tax rate.
I'll answer that question. The, the Riverwalk stage, what, I mean, there's a platform there now. What, what would it look like tomorrow, once that thing happens?
Christie, would you like to address that?
Sure, so this would be more of a permanent roofing for the bands, to secure them, potentially when bad weather comes. If they can't secure their equipment, they have to cancel right then and there, even if a storm's gonna pass through. And we have to pay them full price if they show up. If we had a more permanent structure over them, they could ride out the storm and still perform for us.
Have those canceled?
We've had years where half of the concerts have been canceled, and we've had to pay the bands.
So Mr. Holroyd's question is, why isn't that in the tourism fund? Mr. Holroyd, it could be in the tourism fund. However, we've tried to be very careful about what's in the tourism fund because, you know, when the decision was made to join HTRFA, we counted on having some amount of reserves to cover that should we have a change in our economic conditions or the tourism fund, for whatever reason. So we absolutely could do that. However, that's the, that's the trade-off.
But there's two million plus in the, in reserve right now.
Right, so the question is.
But we've got the sports complex that we gotta fund.
So.
I understand, but it's after.
Yeah, this is, what are you talking about, is reserve? So reserve, what you're talking about, right?
Reserve for the tourism. Why wouldn't we pay for the stage out of that?
As I said, you could. We, we just took a little more conservative approach with that fund, not to go too far with it. Because if you added that to the trolleys, I mean, there's a million right there, so you just took a third of it. And we're getting ready to pay, we're past the point of paying four hundred thousand dollars a year. We're gonna be paying eight hundred thousand dollars a year. And while the tourism fund does have a, create a surplus, or has prior to HTRFA, you know, we're, we're a little more cautious about what the future looks like. So we're just trying to be a little conservative with it. But you're absolutely right, it could be.
Okay.
Have we lost three hundred thirty thousand dollars in canceled concert over the past couple of years?
There is one season we canceled over half of our concerts in the entire series, which was probably roughly thirty, thirty thousand.
Okay, all right.
Another thing, too, is that wasn't designed really with performance in mind. Y'all have all been down there for concerts. If you're sitting on the ground, you can't see the band. The one thing is to get that up a little bit so that, that everybody can see the bands as well.
This is not an argument of whether it's a good idea or not. It's just matter, do we do this year, or do we do it another year?
We tried to do it in twenty seventeen, but we've been doing those maintenance budgets.
Well, if we go through that, you know, I'm gonna push, say the hell, how many years we had to push the library.
Library brings a lot more than.
And one other thing with, with that.
Using the money wisely.
Is we have twenty twenty-six coming. So we're, we're trying to get those things done before the twentieth anniversary.
Before then, too.
I would, too, but, but if we can save some money right now.
Well, if we can take it out of the tourism fund, I'd be.
I would.
Yeah, I'd, I'd rather do it that way.
The economic development CIP, is, is three hundred thousand dollars is a total that we give them each year? The economic development CIP, is $300,000 is our total that we give them each year? The EDA CIP?
Four, four grants, yes.
That is essentially almost all that the EDA gets. We do not, I mean, there's not a lot of land that the EDA has. They get a couple bond fees, the total about $80,000, but that would completely pretty much defund any incentives we would have for existing businesses.
Okay, and I understand that. I know how those grants are used for that, but the data I like to have, I don't know if we have it though, is if, and I guess we go through the $300,000 every year?
Well-
Roughly 200,000?
Right now, our cash on hand is about $100,000 with all of our commitments. So it's been a good year for grants.
What I, what I, what I would love to know is, if we spend $200,000 a year out of that fund, grants here and grants there and so forth, to help people put new signage up or whatever, hopefully drive more business to them, that should in turn drive more tax revenue through the county. So, you know, are we seeing $200,000 plus return on investment? If that's what we're doing?
Yes.
And if so, okay, then it makes sense that you make that investment. If not, then we need to stop it. That's what I, if we have those numbers, I like to see what they are.
Well, you have one more thing you want to say?
I do, I have one more thing to share with you real quick. So I started off this conversation by talking about how the public input has certainly played a role in the way we think about the budget. So we did have a comment that was emailed to us about, about how the, we tout the low tax rate, which is this, and how we would still be in good shape. So we had a comment that came to us, and they said, well, the tax rate's not all of it. It also has to do with the value of the homes. So their theory was, the person who made the comment, their theory was that the value, the high value of York County homes outstrips our ability to brag about being the lowest on the scale. So what we wanted to share with you is, at the proposed rate, right there, that's where we sit. If you took that number and took the real estate rate, the median home value, and calculated the tax values for all of that, that's where we sit, 3207 for York County at the proposed rate. So however, if you take it and put it in relation to our median household income and take that tax as a percent of the median household income, so essentially the burden of that tax upon the homeowners, the residents of the county, look where we sit. To me, that's a great indication of the value that York County is providing. Now, I have to give credit to Susan and the finance staff. They, they put this together after some brainstorming of ours and did a really nice job. And I asked Susan to come up in case she had some other comments she'd like to make about it.
No other comment.
Okay, so I just-
I think it speaks for itself.
But this is something we talked about before, and I think this shows where we are.
Right.
And what we, where we can go.
What it also shows is how we, over the years, have adjusted our tax rates. That, to me, is the most, probably the most important part. People get all excited when they see the evaluation, and then they say, oh, they base it against the current tax rate. If you look at that chart, we've dropped our tax rates down to compensate, and we've been very frugal, and we've pushed it down dramatically to keep the taxes low, historically for at least the last couple of decades.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
Yes, sir. And that's what we believe in.
Very important to understand.
Thank you for the chart.
So the fact that we, the fact that we're raising the tax rate this time-
Not yet.
It's too long. We've gone to all the-
Was proposed. The reason is proposed is time, and we've had-
We haven't done it yet.
But it's coming off the bottom. But I mean, historically, you know, I have a hard time when people come in and say, you know, the dam is for, for trying. And in truth, you've still got to provide services to your citizens.
So Susan, help me have a, an elevator conversation with somebody about that 3%. So I catch somebody in the grocery store or Ace Hardware. How do, how do I translate that 3, that 3% to something that, wrap the head around? I mean, I get where you're going, but-
I, I think it's, when you compare us to the localities around us, the, the tax burden on the household is one of the lowest in the, in the area. I mean, and we don't really even compare to Isle of Wight because they don't have a full fire and life safety department, they have volunteers.
If you say tax burden, I mean, you say tax burden to citizens, that doesn't mean anything.
And we're really just talking about real estate tax here. So that's because that's the issue at the end.
It would be like the cost, it's part of the cost of living in York County.
Yes.
I mean, to me, it's kind of put it in terms, people are going to say it's the cost of living in York County.
That's right, that's a better way of that thing characterized, that last column is, what is the cost of living in York County?
It's cheaper.
Yes.
I use the word value.
Yeah, cheap's not a good word, less expensive.
It's a combination, you miss the value.
Cheap references.
And I just wanted to mention too, when we were doing this exercise, we played with that real estate tax rate. It has to go past 86 cents to, to go any higher than James City County, as far as tax burden.
86 cents?
Yes.
So, you know, I was just kind of curious, okay, we're at 3%.
The next one closest to us is at 3.3. You know, what does a cent do? What does two cent do? And I thought that was really telling, that you could go all the way to 86 cents before our position in the region is changed.
Oh, before, we can go to 86 before it goes to 3.3.
Right, before we tie James City, we could raise our tax rate six more cents.
And that's before any of these localities announce what they're doing.
Well, we saw someone come out, they're already starting to jack up.
Do you want to touch upon that?
James City County came out with a higher one.
The latest announcements or what else is happening around?
Oh, sure. Gloucester has come out with a increase in the tax rate, 4.3 cents.
That's your, you're talking real estate tax rate?
Correct, correct. Mr. Holroyd and I had a nice conversation today about James City County and what that actually means. So they'll not be rebating again. So that is effectively a tax increase. The homeowners, they rebated the real estate tax.
They maintained the real estate rate last year at 83, and then gave a rebate on half of a year's tax.
Right, okay.
Equivalent of two and a half cents of tax rebate last year on the total bill.
So they're not doing it, essentially, their taxes-
This year, they're basically going back to 83, which was where they were before last year's assessments.
So it's effectively a tax increase.
A tax increase, right?
Yes, they stayed flat on where they were two years ago.
And, and the other thing-
Well, they charge you, but they're not giving a rebate. So actually, they're not staying the same.
The rate's staying the same, but the out-of-pocket expenses is going up.
This is a great chart. It's really, you can, if you study it a little bit, just look at the bottom, Newport News, median price, look at a house, 243,000, yet the burden is what, 1.4 cents more, percent more?
Right. I mean, we really, we-
And those folks can't afford it less than we can here in York County. And yet, the burden on them is because of their, their situation.
That's a great observation, and I would tell you that, I think some of the, some of the new work that we've done on the budget this year, this is one of the most telling items. The other one is the 22 million dollar slide that shows what money was not collected. So I think those are probably the two most telling slides of this budget season so far.
I have only one copy of this chart, I love this chart.
We could do this.
And we do have-
And Mr. Holroyd, I want to say it wasn't my fault.
I have been trying to get him to go.
I told you, I told you all two retreats ago, I'm not going to stop asking questions, so.
I'm complete, this is what I wanted to share with you.
Great.
Enjoy your dinner.
Thank you. Motion to table.
Main gavel. Are we done? Any else?
Not for me, if you want to make comments.
Does anybody have anything else that they'd like to discuss?
Just mention the, mention, mention the town meeting. Mention our, mention our-